Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49CountyNewsTV.
Hello, my name is Bo. I'm the manager here at Splash in a Flash, Frank's Automotive, and Frank's Quality Housing LLC.
Since 2009, Frank's Automotive,
Splash in a Flash,
and Frank's Quality Housing LLC has provided local professional services for our community.
Services such as auto detailing,
mechanic work,
1995 oil change,
24/7 towing and roadside assistance,
pressure washing,
ask about our VIP membership.
We would like to thank you for your business.
Call us at 205-921-2378.
Located at 115 Pike Trail Hamilton, Alabama.
Like us on Facebook, Splash in a Flash LLC.
Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us and all that you allow us to have and enjoy. We thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to serve the people of this fine county. We pray especially, Lord, for the victims, the terrible situation down in Lee County. And, Lord, we pray that you might comfort these people down there and meet their needs. We pray for them, Lord, that they might, those sick, those injured, they might return to their homes with help and that you breathe, Lord, to look to you for guidance. We ask you to go with us today in all decisions we make by being courtists of thy will. Please bless us with thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your republic for which it stands, one nation under thy indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Don't need to order Mr. Leo. You have first priority here.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. I've got two things to bring up to you quickly. The first thing is that resolution declaration of emergency. We need to get that signed for our county and it also covers your municipalities in our county. And it does not do anything but open up if we need any kind of emergency services, as far as something from the state or from another county. It opens up that avenue for us, plus for any funding that we're working towards now. It also opens up that avenue where we can-
What are we talking about this?
Yes, sir.
But we can't sign it right now. Do we need, Scott, do we need to, you need to read this to us or something?
I think it's, I prefer it's such a standard one that we-
Yes.
I'll review it, but I think generally it's okay.
Well, I know. Could you get a copy for everybody so we can at least know what it says?
Yes, sir. I'll get you a copy.
Well, if you will, just make a copy. Four more copies, five more. And so, please, Lord, no more were signed.
Also, this right here is a grant agreement between the state and the AMA as for our state money that we get. It's $998. It's an annual thing that we get. We get one for state, one for federal. We get a surplus if we've done everything correctly throughout the year. And I give a salary supplement because I've met all the recommendations and all the ties that been dotted and the deeds that been crossed.
Does that include us?
It goes to the general fund.
Well, good. But yeah, it comes back out to you.
Yes, sir.
We need to get him one of these little things. Oh, we need to. Let's kind of look over this and see if we can find where money's voted.
I looked over that other one.
Look at that, where money is at all?
No, we can vote on it today.
This declaration should have done and been signed.
Okay.
Yeah, and I looked at that the other day, so it's-
All right.
And I'll make copies of- Thank you, sir. And there's three copies of that. I keep one, Ruth keeps one, and we send one back.
Right here for your line?
Yes, sir. Now, this is the money we get every year for doing everything that we're supposed to. Well, Mr. Robb, sign it. Gentlemen, I have a quick question. Do y'all like the way I send the text of the picture on the weather stuff? It gives you all, it tells you a whole lot without having to type it whole.
Yeah.
Sorry, we got some work coming up. I'll send the text out later.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for getting that stopped from coming on the weekend.
I wish. And I get your copies of this.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. David, do you own a dress, Mr. Tidwell, or Brooke?
Oh.
Okay.
Mr. Tidwell had surgery. And it's the type in which I can open up your catastrophic sick leave bank policy to where people can donate their time for Mr. Tidwell. And there are several deputies and myself and other county employees that would like to donate their sick time to him.
Okay. Once again, can we go on this today?
Yes.
We'd need a motion to allow Mr. Tidwell to accept donations from other county employees. Any county employee.
Any county employee.
I don't know the gentleman.
I make that motion. I know what they- Dick, you've been waiting for-
Couple of years.
Couple, three, five, four, three, and he's still-
Got a motion?
Second.
That's second. All firsts, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, aye? All right. Is Mike on his way?
Yes.
God, be best wait on Mike to get through before you get started.
Probably so. I may be a little bit longer.
Yeah, yeah. We can sign Beatles here for a few minutes.
Keith, Keith, nice to sign that. Give that back to Brooke.
Keith, you need to sign this.
Don't run in back. I didn't sign the back, I forgot. Pass it back.
I didn't sign the back here. Y'all won't get no back, Chris. You didn't follow the route.
Send the general fund, you want it.
What?
I'm not turning up Sunday. I hope my tussle weren't getting that.
Yeah, those are my-
That's one of the files. Yes, and Bob already has one.
Oh, maybe we-
I'll stick it in place. I'll keep this last one.
Bob, he already had one.
No, I gave it back.
Oh, then you can have one.
It's the only one. I'll get one.
Well, stack it, figure it out.
Yes, and I'll get y'all a copy after, okay?
What?
I'll be there.
Is this the resolution, Jim?
Dean, I got a couple items we need to probably mention to you. Of course, most y'all don't know, we made application. It's actually been some time back, probably prior to us taking office, on what we call HTRR money to tie rural roads. And we've actually managed funding for guard rail on- On County Road, there's two places on County Road 56. There at the Covert Commissioner, and then down at the bridge, I think you and I talked about that. On County Road 47, that Covert down in the bottom, that big box Covert, it was approved. Then County Road 85, where they got those large pipes going on the roadway right there. And County Road 52. Those projects were funded through the safety program. It's 90% federal and 10% local. And if y'all are interested in doing that project, we need to adopt a resolution to support it.
Yeah. 52, where's-
That Covert, the concrete was broke on it, you know? It looks like, it's not as bad a safety as it looks. It's a-
Old luck's fly. Word divides me and you, Bob, I think.
Okay, is that-
Yeah. But it's, it's done in the bottom. It's just, I don't know where y'all differentiate it. You know, one of-
There's only one large Covert.
One on 47 is in mine right there.
It's a triple, I think it's a triple barrel Covert, pretty good sized Covert. But this is what this is. It's a program that the ALBOC came up with. It's to provide bridges that don't currently have some type of guard rail system to add it to. It's a safety, it's a competitive type request, and it's a safety improvement. It's be 90% federal and 10% local.
As district funds.
Well, normally, we would pay that out of our TRR funds, four and a five percent. I mean, typically, typically, that's the way we've done these type projects in the past.
How much, how many fees?
It was a hundred.
For a whole five, like, four?
The federal part was 190, 197,000. 132,000. 132,000.
That's 20,000 dollars.
Yes. Well, actually, it's 10% match, it's 13,000. 132, and then 10% of that would be 13,286.
Well, I thought 700,000.
I did, but I went back to track that it's 132,861. So, whatever the commission desires to do, there is a time limit on this. So, if you're gonna do it, I'd recommend Monday that y'all vote on it to do it. But if you got any further questions-
It's cost us 13,286.
Yeah. And we'll do, we'll do the approach work as not a part of the cost of the project. You know, any fill material that has to be-
Is this installed?
Yeah, it'd be installed. We'll have to do the preparatory work in regards, as far as putting any backfill material to get our required roadway widths for the installation of guard rail.
Okay.
Okay, next thing, I had Bevel State contact me. They're interested in doing a CDL driver testing program. And they would like to use that spot over at the airport that we've used in the past. Talked with our attorney, and of course, it's something y'all do. We probably want to get some type of release, get the attorney to prepare some type of release for Bevel State. But that, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah. Who put a fence over it?
I don't know. That fence somehow draws people to it. I mean, we put up warning signs, we put up end of road signs, advance warning signs. For some reason, they just run into it.
Well, they just run over, run into it.
Yeah, I mean, oh, yeah, you're talking about that one. Well, we get, we get, we got another fence, end of road gets run. We don't know. Probably need to get it fixed.
No insurance involved in it.
We don't, we have no idea. It was, I guess we could call it hit and run. So, Bevel State has requested that we do that, so I'll bet something we-
Is this a training course, or are they actually gonna give this, these tests at Bevel State?
It's a training course. I don't, I don't know that the test's gonna be given anymore. They pulled that out, and we have to go to Florence to do our test.
That's what I was fixing to say. You need to talk to them and see if-
It would be good if Bevel State and all capable department of public safety can get it back working. That would be a good thing with that. That's right. Okay, we talked about, we got, we got a fence bid to open up for District 5, if it be Monday. And then we've got to open up bids on the South Surplus Park, they own tractor and boom cutter. So, that, those two items will be on the agenda to-
To build some boom cutter.
Yes, sir. And then the other thing is, we, it probably will be our last A-trip project under, under the formal program. We led a contract on the County Road 9 Bridge. Glasgow Construction was the love letter at 562,000 dollars. You know, I'd recommend that the commission concur in making the award to Glasgow Construction to build the project.
What plot road?
County Road 9. The good news about it is it's zero county dollars.
Is that the Carter Road down behind?
It's County Road 9, I don't know. Yeah. But it's, the good thing is, it's part of our ramp funds, our A-trip funds. And it won't cost the county anything, you know? And we'll, we'll, we'll probably do the CE and I, which is the construction engineering inspection. Unless something changes, we'll put Richard out there to do that inspection. You know, make sure it's built according to the plan specifications.
When you say it don't cost anything, is this another part that we can get money out of?
No, this is, this is a part of the A-trip program. You know, y'all heard the ones that, I've got a lot to tell you on the thing.
But this is leftover?
Yeah, this is, this is some money that actually, that Winfield turned back in. And we went and met with the director and asked him to give us that money because that money was earmarked for Marion County. We wanted that money to stay in Marion County. And we had a project that we could put it on, so they were nice enough to allow us to use it on one of our projects.
Appreciate you doing this, sir.
Well, we try to get, take advantage of what we can.
You can get all you get.
Hey, yeah, absolutely, you know?
Was that all of it that Ed left? Did they take all of it?
That's pretty much it. You know, we've, we've replaced a lot of bridges in the last three or four years.
Oh, yeah.
Many much needed bridges. A lot of them had 10, 12 miles.
That's had been, he had a bridge initiative.
That's right. That was, I think, that was back in the late nineties, maybe? I can't remember.
Yeah.
I think it was in the late nineties that we did that bridge bond program and then this A-trip program. And of course, they're talking about potentially another A-trip program coming up. So, there's, there's some things on the horizon, and you just don't really know until you hear what, what, what they end up deciding. But we'll need a letter from the chairman concurring in making that award to Glasgow Construction. That's the little bit.
Does, is that, Mike, has that money got to go? I mean, it's done set, that's where they agreed to go to that bridge? Or could we have used that, split it up on some more highways?
No, actually, actually, we submitted a plan back when this program was initiated. We submitted plans that were eligible under the terms of the project.
Okay.
And so, it pretty much, no, it pretty much, it had to be spent on the project, it had been prior, prior approved. So, that was not an option.
This was money that was to replace the bridge our entailing, went for the one.
That's correct. Apple Avenue Bridge. And they decided, for whatever reason, that they didn't want to do that project. And we found out that money was available. We went and, you know, we worked with some of the state people down here. Told them we've got a project we didn't have funding for, but was approved under A-trip. So, we, we, it was, it's a good deal for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, for a bridge.
Yeah, and that don't cost us anything, of course.
I wish they'd known it was nice, we had that 400 something thousand spread on the town.
I know, I know. Can't do that. Was not an option, wasn't an option. And you're gonna find out, this is like that HTRR money we're talking about. A lot of this money has to meet certain criteria. You know, you can't, it's just like the gas tax, county road design policy. Got to meet it, you know, you might want to put it over here, but you can't do it. It doesn't meet the criteria as outlined in the project.
That'll be a major criteria.
Well, Mike, you get federal money. Yeah, for federal money, actually, they included minors. And this thing has changed from year to year. It used to be just majors. Actually, you, there's a certain percentage of that money that can be spent on minors. And we've done some minors. But when the state, and here's the deal about it. When they exceed that threshold, you can, you can no longer do minors. There's a certain amount of that federal money that's obligated for minors. But once it's spent, you can't come do a minor on it that year, you have to wait till another funding year. And it can get kind of complicated if you don't keep up with it and don't do it every day. I can see where some like to get confused. But with that being said, I don't have any other further business unless y'all do.
What's targeted, Dave, for patching, patching and saving?
Well, Curtis and I talked about that a little bit this morning in our personalities. Just soon as it starts warming up, you know, we've got, we've got these floods. Everybody's trying to get this flood damage done. I'm sure that's gonna affect, you know, some things as far as priorities and getting some things done. And your pipe, your pipe's coming today, by the way. The guy called, they're gonna be delivering it, so-
He talking about the pipe on 42?
Yes, pipe on 42. So, you know, we'll kind of see how, how those things progress, and I know-
Well, you think this, what we turned in, this life is legitimate? Or just like easily when we get to one of the same way we're wrong? Only that's-
You know, I-
Everybody's get-
Listen, if I, I would have no idea. I mean, I would like to think it was eligible. I'd like to think that what we did was eligible on the FEMA program. Of course, we got two pots of money. We pulling out of ER on County Road 42. We talked about ER funds versus FEMA funds. So, the ER, I feel a little better about than I do the FEMA, you know? And, and, you know, of course, you talked to the AMA director on FEMA. And I'm sure he brought y'all up to speed on where that's at and what's going on in regards to the FEMA program. But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get every dollar we can.
Well, you always have. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Who's starting first on patching? Which, does it line, anything lined up yet?
No, it doesn't matter. Y'all, we just kind of, y'all kind of decide, or the commission's always kind of decided.
We try to go, if we start on up front, we try to not move to the back, you know, to-
There's nothing magical about it. I mean, whatever y'all want to do, that's what we do. I mean, it, it, we, you know, we still have time to do everything for everybody and-
No more, no more ground than the money cost, you'll be done.
That's right. It won't take long to spend. I know. I wish I hadn't said that, Commissioner. It's true.
It is.
Whatever y'all want to do. Y'all just let us know. We'll start where, we'll go in whatever direction y'all want to go. It doesn't matter to us.
It's best to start here and come my way, though, then with me. I mean, there's no need moving equipment from one side of the county to the other.
What I'll say is, we start up here, we can grab it.
Well, typically, we start pretty close to home in case there's some bugs with the equipment. And we try to get everything ready.
Yeah, I want to be, I want to be second, third in line. I know how this works. I don't want to be first.
I've been talking to my secretary too.
I don't know.
I don't want to be at the end, or there may not be no money to get to the last one. These have to go to the last, so we can get the money for y'all.
I started being quiet. It's like I've heard some of these things before.
I don't want to hear that from him.
I don't know.
Probably him.
But I was good. I mean, if there's something y'all need, we're gonna do that.
This guard rail money, was this all that could be added into this? Or is this just what?
It was a very narrow program as far as what it can do. It was a program designed for unshielded bridges.
The bridge.
It was unshielded, bridged by definition. And, and it was a very narrow window of what could be done. It was definitely, it was specifically for that purpose, for safety, for unshielded bridges. So, that narrows the scope of the work greatly.
No. Deep revenge.
No, it was for unshielded bridges. And they were very specific about that. And actually, that was a competitive grant. We didn't know if we were gonna get funded or not. I, you know, Ann and I talked about it. Said, well, we need, we've got some, but we'll turn it in and see how, if they fund it, but they don't fund it. You know, and we'll have to do a little work, and you don't have to take the money. I mean, if you don't want it, you know, you're not obligated to take it. And that's why, if you want to do the resolution, we do the resolution. If you don't, we don't. But, but, you know, being safety features, you know, we felt like it was something that would be beneficial to the county.
That one on 52 was definitely an eight to one.
Yeah, it was kind of narrow and steep. And, and, you know, you just, you just don't know. You don't know, you do these things, and if nobody wrecks, and you assume that the improvement helped, and it helps, you know, the public.
Well, it's a tall too, that's a tall bridge.
One thing, Mike, too, we need to remember. Some of these roads, I know you mentioned 56, that we talked about, putting a couple on there. And if we've got that line resurfaced or painted in the next year or two, we need to watch when we put these things up, that we ain't gotta go in there and remove them again when we go to do the-
We, we, we put them into the standard required. There's an engineering standard that we develop our work to. I mean, in, in regards, the things you look at on guard rail is roadway width and guard rail height. And also, amount of material behind the guard rail, to make sure you got it properly supported. And there's actually, you look at it like a 15 degree approach angle, you got to fill in some dirt there. So, there's a lot of engineering things that y'all, we don't really get into the faculty, it's not important to y'all. We just tell you what we need. But we know, we're, we're telling you because it's the standard required to do it. You may not understand it, but y'all aren't engineers, and we don't want, you know, you don't want to try to learn everything as long as y'all, y'all are here to get the work done. And it's our job to see that it's done properly and correctly. But, but that's, you know, to answer your question, we'll make sure that, that it meets the current standards as far as any future additional work. And this is kind of crazy, to give you an example. They changed the design height for the guard rail by three or four inches. So, so there has been a change in the height for the guard rail. And, and I'm sure there's been some studies, cars have ridden over vehicles, and they've raised it up about four inches. And so, those things that we make sure that we get it to the proper height.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Let's go.
He looked like he had work burned before he goes. Was that that man?
No, it looked like he's like, oh, I gotta talk to Scott now. While Mike is here, I wanted to go with the gas tax proposal, since now we have a proposed deal. And I'll do that first, since Mike is here. Right now, the Department of Revenue's numbers are, they're estimating this is gonna be about a $300 million annual revenue to the, ultimately to the state by 2021. And not considering that there's some extra fees on electric vehicles that are not really that appropriate to us. It's $200 if I go straight to the state. But for our purposes, it's a six cent tax, starting in August of this year. And effective October 1st of 2020, there's a two cent tax added to that to make it eight. Then 2021, there's another two cent added to it to make it a total of 10. And that's where that $300 million number kicks in.
So, with August every year?
Well, it's August of this year, then October, it starts in October, the remaining years. After that, there's going to be an index where there's a potential that that gas tax could raise as much as one cent or be lower than one cent, depending upon the numbers issued by the Federal Highway Administration based on construction costs. But of the money that comes in, and let's just use that $300 million number, this is just an estimate. That money comes in the state off the top, Department of Revenue gets 25% of 1% for their, their fee. So, 0.25% goes off. The second aspect is, there's gonna be $750,000 from the gasoline tax and up to $230,000 of the diesel tax that will go to find the port, Albano Port. So, that's roughly a million dollars a year will go to fund a bond issue for the Albano Highway Finance Corporation, which will be used at the port or the state docks. And that's to fund a bond issue up to $150 million. But the, as long as the maturity doesn't go further than 20 years. So, that, that million dollars a year will only go for 20 years. And then after that, I assume that would just come back into the pot. And that's, they're diverting that money over to the state docks in an effort to use that as matching monies on some federal funds that they hope Senator Shelby will be able to gather to help the state docks dredge a little bit deeper and allow bigger ships to come into the state, which hopefully would help the economy out in state. And us ship more and bigger goods. to help the state docks dredge a little bit deeper and allow bigger ships to come into the state, which hopefully would help, um, the economy out in the state and us ship more and bigger goods. The meat of the coconut part of it is once all that money's taken, taken out of what the state receives, the Department of Transportation, Transportation will receive sixty-six point sixty-seven percent of the monies that come in.
Sixty-six what percent?
Basically sixty-seven percent of, of the money. Um, and that, that money's to go to, for, uh, basically just to be used on roads. Part of that money, four hundred thousand dollars, the way I read it, out of that money that Alamo receives, each county will receive four hundred thousand dollars. This is an exchange for the annual, uh, federal allocation that y'all received now five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Currently, every year y'all get five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from Alamo, uh, based upon federal funds that the state receives. That, that will be taken out. You will no longer receive that five thirty-three, but you will receive four hundred thousand, um, instead. But.
Oh, that's a good deal, isn't it?
Well, part of that is based upon the administrated, administrated fees that you'd have to pay on that five thirty-three. So you're roughly getting about the same amount of usable dollars. Um, and my understanding from the county, uh, County Commission Association and others is that there were a lot of counties that did not have the match for that five hundred and thirty-three. So this is just, we're giving you the four hundred thousand dollars and you don't have to worry about coming up with money to match it.
But they're taking the other.
How about checking a hundred and thirty-three thousand?
They're taking a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
What would the fees come up to be?
Roughly a hundred and thirty-three thousand. I think it's roughly trying to, to give y'all ultimately what you would receive.
This is coming out of gasoline tax proposals that they want to pass.
That's right.
Well, if it don't pass it.
Now, that, 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 that part, I don't think comes out. That's, that's, it didn't come out of the revenues generated or does it?
It, the way it reads in here, it, because it's included into the part where the state gets their money, it comes out of Alamo's portion, but it, it may come out of the federal allocation. But it's just, my understanding, it's a way to give, to give the counties four hundred thousand dollars and because not all counties were able to receive it.
What, what are we gonna give if they don't pass it?
We're, same thing.
Sorry.
Same thing we do now.
And one thing that that four hundred allows you to do, it allows you to.
We're not getting four hundred more, are we?
No, no.
We're not gonna pay. We're not getting any more than we've always got.
Right, yeah, but it allows you.
But they're gonna pass the tax anyway?
I'll get to that. This is just on that file. This is.
Yeah, they're going back with five hundred and thirty-three thousand. Give us four hundred thousand. We don't need a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Okay, and these fees and all this stuff, if, if we don't need them after the four hundred thousand, we get it. Why do we need them now? Like, we just keep the hundred and thirty-three thousand. That's my point, I guess. That's.
They didn't before.
If we don't need them after this four hundred thousand, why do we need them now? I guess that's my point. My, my question, why don't we leave a hundred, leave a hundred and thirty-three thousand?
If Scott finishes, he'll understand it, I think.
Yeah.
Well, I understand we're gonna give more than twenty-five percent of that.
No, and that, that was basically my question. It looks like you're losing a hundred and thirty-three.
Yes.
I think ultimately, when you do all the numbers about what you get and what you have to match and what you have to pay Alamo to get all that money and do all those things, it's gonna be a wash. And Mike can go into.
And that's pretty much true. They've got like a thirteen or fourteen percent admin fee that they tack on to every federal project that we do. They get that off the top. And, and what they're doing is they're taking that out and giving us the balance. And one thing that really, that really helps the counties in regard to this, if you remember, we talked earlier, federal money is restricted to major, minor, minor collectors. This money can be used on county road design policy, which can be used on some roads that aren't eligible under the federal program. And it, you don't have to provide any match, so it frees up some other money. It, it just kind of swapping some money around. It's really kind of a wash. Now, you, it might be a few dollars one way or the other, but at the end of the day, it, it does give you more flexibility to, to do it on roads that normally would not be eligible under the federal program. And you don't have to go through all the federal red tape. And then you, like I said, the state charges an admin fee right off the top. It's thirteen or fourteen percent that they're gonna get just for handling the paperwork and processing all the documents, in the, in the bid documents, in the plans, in the specs. We would do those out of the county. We, our staff would do that, so we would eliminate that fee.
I guess my question is, if they can eliminate, actually, I know we, y'all got nothing to do with this, but if they can eliminate, actually, we get the four hundred thousand, they can eliminate the four and let us keep the hundred and thirty-three thousand. All these restrictions, no good, no way.
Yeah, that, that, that's one of the issues that we could address without it. Um, part of it, it seems like, and, and I could be wrong about this part, but it looks like it's gonna be a little easier money to, to expend and not have to go through as much red tape as we would have to go through with the five thirty-three. It's minor collectors and higher roads, but, and bridge structures to be used on, but I don't see as much red tape with this.
What about those, those prescriptive right away? I, I don't, we don't, I don't like it either, but, but that's just the way the bill was written.
What about no prescriptive right away roads?
You, you don't have to have.
And use it that way?
Yes. Gotta make the county road design policy. That's what it says. You know, we can, we can go with prescriptive right away, provided such that we can, we can make all our criteria through the cross-sectional elements of the roadway. Make, as long as we can make that county road design policy, it's eligible. That's what we gotta make, county road design policy. That's, that's the criteria. We've got a policy in our office that, that goes out in detail exactly what we gotta do. And, and, you know, I think Commissioner Holt, you and I talked about, and I said, you know, that road may not be wide enough to use the money on, because we may not meet the policy. And that's what we'll do. We'll get with y'all, we'll establish what our priorities are, which y'all have given us pretty much what a lot of your priorities are. And we'll rank those and then we'll go out and engineer them and make sure that there's not any problems.
Will we leave priorities or highway split?
Well, that's a good question.
And I, uh, skipping ahead, this act requires the county to develop a transportation plan for use of this money. It'll have to be posted out, be approved by y'all. So Mike will have to prepare that. Y'all will have to look at it and prove it. Um, and I think that'll.
I think in advance and at the end.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
But after the state, there's sixty-seven percent. Also, out of their, their monies, there will be a grant program, uh, for the, uh, counties to apply for as well, uh, counties and cities. But y'all will get twenty-five percent of this money that comes, comes in. Forty-five percent of that's gonna be divided equally among every county. So we'll get just as much as Jefferson County, Shelby County, Mobile County, Green County. Uh, fifty-five percent of that is gonna be based upon population. Uh, right now, that'll be based upon the last census on, uh, twenty-two, one, twenty-two, when we have a new census, there'll be a new one, but. All that means, the numbers I saw estimated, we're gonna get about eight hundred thousand dollars out of this twenty-five percent, um, that'll come into the county. We can use up to fifty percent of that, which I was surprised a little bit, but, uh, up to fifty percent, um, to support a bond or, uh, a note. Like if we wanted to go out and borrow some money and use the gas tax as leverage for that, to get that money, so we could do several projects at once, which Mike and I talked about that possibility. Uh, we can still, we can only use five, uh, fifty percent or up to fifty percent to do that. The counties must ensure that at least fifty percent of the funds are allocated to projects utilizing the established bidding procedures as well. Or project max. The, the cities get eight point three percent of this money, twenty-five percent's divided equally. The other seventy-five percent is based upon population. So our cities are not really gonna get a whole lot of money, um, out of this. Um, the distribution should begin later than January twenty twenty, so it'll get, as soon as the bill passes, as is, it'll get imposed beginning in August. And so in January, y'all start getting some money out of this. And it'll have to go into its own fund. There's an annual grant program that Alamo's creating under this for up to ten million dollars for use of, on any classified system or roads and bridges, so we can apply for, for grants pursuant to that. And that's money that Alamo gets out of this. It's a little balled when they threw the counties and the cities, because they were taking so much out, out of this. Um, but again, we have to follow their guidelines to do that. First round of grant applications would be due by November of this year. And then they create, and Mike referenced that, uh, in here as well, they create an A trip two program in here for, uh, extra monies to apply for. And that's gonna be between thirty and fifty million dollars. And it looks like it'll be probably fairly similar to the current A trip program that's winding up now. So out of all this, uh, we're looking at getting one point two million for sure. Using those estimated totals, taking out the five thirty-three that, uh, we would, would receive as well. So we're looking at maybe clearing seven fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars from what we, uh, normally would have received for this. Again, it goes in its own special fund, um, and county engineer is supposed to develop a transportation plan for your approval pursuant to it to, to use the monies in accordance with some of the guidelines that you put. It's basically giving y'all money, uh, to, to use as y'all see fit. There is that requirement that some of those projects will be bidded projects. Um, at least half of those will be bidded projects. Other half will not necessarily be bidded, bidded projects, which may be more helpful to y'all, but. But that's as it is now, and I have no clue about. There's a lot of discussion, pros and cons to it. Um, they're obviously in a special session right now to discuss it. The biggest concern we have from a county standpoint is we wish we'd got a bigger piece of the pot. Um, eight hundred thousand dollars is helpful to y'all, but as Mike's ruling off the numbers here, you know, it's five hundred plus thousand to fix one bridge on County Highway nine.
Yeah, and that bridge, it no longer is walled.
Yeah, it's a very small bridge on a small road. It's not even a, you know, extremely wide road. Um, so that, that's a, a large concern that a lot of people have is we're imposing this tax and it, it, it's gonna be helpful. Eight hundred extra thousand dollars, but we wish we could get more than twenty-five percent out of it.
The gasoline door of ten cents a gallon.
Ultimately, gas would be ten cents a gallon. It'll be six cents beginning in August.
That's what I'm saying, by twenty-one.
Twenty-one, it'd be ten cents a gallon more. I put in ten gallons this morning. It cost me a dollar.
Did they ever, is it on all fuel, gas, and diesel?
Some gas and diesel. And, um, that's what they, they're taking the seven hundred, roughly thirty thousand dollars to go to, uh, the state docks from gasoline tax and another two thirty off of diesel tax to go to the state docks. I thought that that might actually be reversed. But, um, uh, but yeah, it's gonna be on gas and diesel. So that's.
If, if it passes, have you talked, have you talked to our representatives and, and what are they thinking on whether it's gonna go or not?
I think they're iffy on whether it's gonna go or not. There's, there's going to be a tremendous amount of discussion about it. And, uh, probably the structure of this deal, uh, will be in place, but there's probably gonna be some negotiating on, on a lot of the details, um, in it. And hopefully on the percentages. But I don't know if our County Commission Association is even fighting that fight or if it's gonna be left up to the legislature and legislators to, to fight for it. And I talked with some of the mayors, uh, the other day in the meeting about how much they're, they'll be getting and, you know, like Hackaburk, you know, maybe get twenty thousand dollars out of, out of it, twenty-five thousand. I mean, it's nice to have it, but, you know, when there's so much, so many restrictions on it, what can you do with twenty-five thousand dollars on a road?
Well, uh, what are your municipalitys that, uh, even, uh, smaller than Hackaburk, what about the ones that have no, uh, ways of using this money while they do with their money?
That's a really good question. They're, they're entitled to it. If you're a municipality, uh, you're, you're gonna get it. But, you know, if, they're, like, we have some in other Marion County that have no.
Well, I have two of them.
And, and so I don't know what they'll do with their money, 'cause there, there's really not many ways they can spend it. They'll have to bid out, they'll have to bid out a project and, and do that, but I don't know what roads they would spend it on.
They would probably be able to get a consultant engineer to prepare their.
With the money they're getting, or they have to consult an engineer, now, now the money's gone, so.
Yeah, I'd not do anything with it, I reckon, or not.
The numbers don't match up to the money.
That's the concern.
If they, if they would start it off at forty percent where you can get, that's, that's a big problem you have. People, you know, i- if you go pay it, if it passes, we gotta pay it, whether we like it or not, we have to pay it. But if it did pass and we were getting forty to forty-five percent of this and people could see their roads being fixed and stuff, that's where all the difference made. And with this, this bill that they're proposing, they're not gonna see that. They're not gonna see that big impact with what's coming off this year. It's my opinion.
Well, I would have liked, I'm not that upset with the breakdown as far as the county portion about being forty-five percent populase, I mean, fifty-five percent populase or forty-five percent equal. I'd like to see those numbers reversed. I know there was, obviously the political power is in Jefferson County and Madison County, Montgomery, Mobile. But, um, but that's okay. But I think the counties deserve more, because if you look at the roadways, the counties have to, to manage, it's a lot of miles. And the state has funds from other sources, but it is what it is. And I know we talked about supporting some system. I don't know if y'all wanna go, you know, out, you know, y'all can think about this, about supporting the, the tax as it is or supporting some additional revenue or, or what y'all may wanna do with that. But we've communicated to our, our representatives that, you know, our thoughts about what we feel like we need out of this. If we're gonna impose this tax on our people, they need to see some benefit from it. Y'all, any more questions regarding that?
What do those be? Are they, what, that be done, done in June?
Being voted on right now.
Sure.
It's right now. They're, they're.
I know, but they, uh, nowhere they won't go before April, so.
Oh, no, it, this will be, let's play it back. But they're, they're in a special session right now, so they'll either pass it or, or, or not pass it. We'll probably know about March nineteenth whether it passes or not.
This is, uh-huh. It's more of a state thing. And it's, it's like it's always been the big cities is gonna get the money, what money they got, uh, down and then, and then Alamo too, uh, it's more for the state than it is the county. So they're looking at foreign to be cities and breaking all that.
Yeah, that's just another way.
Well, at least gasoline's gone up thirty cents, uh, since first of the year. We got a legal.
Well, we got, we spending on one little stretch of road. As in what we begin, we spending on one little stretch.
Well, that's true too, but the, the price of gasoline's gone up thirty cents since first of the year.
Well, you, you're talking about the roads. So, you know, what we're set on now is eighty thousand on each district like that. You ain't looking two and a half miles. That's all you can pay it. So if you take the hundred thousand and you divide it between bites, you're going what again? You're not gonna get to a mile road, I mean, two miles at the top to do it.
You're talking about tar and clay. You're not talking about asphalt.
You're costing you about twenty-eight to twenty-nine thousand.
Last, uh, project on Highway forty-two from Channel Door Road to the fire department, was that one point seven million dollars?
Yeah, I don't remember. Channel twenty-nine was right at nine hundred thousand. Here, here's the federal red tape that we go to do that road right here. That's, that, that's what, that's what it costs. That's what we do just to get it to construction.
For what?
Channel twenty-nine. This is something that was recently done, kinda helped y'all see, you know, this is the magnitude.
What the county did too.
Uh, yeah, the, the federal red.
That's a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that we're, that's four hundred thousand. You talking about what we're gonna give, but we was getting five thirty-three and that's a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
And not to mention what the state's got.
What they got on top of that.
See, if they, if they eliminate that crap right there, we wouldn't have to raise gas taxes.
I think our county engineer and the county engineer association, that, that not battle with our Department of Transportation for quite a while.
Yeah, we have. It, it, of course, I've been in this a long time. It, it, it is frustrating. It's frustrating because of the rules, the, the policies and, and red tape.
It's frustrating because they won't change the rules, regulations and do it. And do it rights, because it's always been done like this.
And, and Commissioner, I mean, we can either do it or they keep their money. It's not like it's an and or. You know, if you can, you don't have to do this, but we ain't giving you the money.
Yeah. But if they could change your rule, they could make a whole lot of things better without the price tag.
Well, see, they can change the rules when they wanna raise the tax and give us five hundred and thirty-three thousand and give us four hundred thousand. They can break the rules and do whatever, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, they can change it then. It just depends what they wanna do.
And y'all heard me say S T money. That's the kind of money we want. It's S T money. That's what we got, what y'all got on old seventy-eight out here, S T. The requirements are much different. You know, don't have near the federal red tape you gotta go through. That's state public road and bridge money.
Shaw money. Shaw money.
It's out of our hands, literally.
Hey, is that exactly right?
It is, but look, it's kinda like Scott said, it is what it is and we've gotta, we gotta stay within the guidelines of the program and we gotta give what we can for Marion County and take advantage of every opportunity we can. Whether we agree with it or not, that's, it is what it is.
More good news.
Scott, you're like, you're full of.
Since we're talking about money, let's move into the jail.
I wrote it on.
It's not together. Well, let's not literally move into the jail, we'll talk about it. A couple of things with it. First of all, I know we've had discussions about the healthcare contract with quality correctional healthcare. I'd recommend to y'all to enter into that contract. It provides extra staffing for the jail, twelve hours a day, seven days a week. It's an extra cost to the county. The total cost be a budgeted amount of two hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred. That's based upon a budgeted allocation of two hundred and thirty-eight, that's direct cost. And that number can go up and it can go down. And then the fee basically is thirty-five thousand, seven hundred. That number is a maximum, but that total, I think, to be budgeted on from a county standpoint is two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. And that gets us one full-time RN and a part-time LPN in addition to the full-time LPN that we have currently.
Say two total, is our contract going to two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred dollars?
That's what I'm saying. And the way that is now, we have, it's roughly gonna be twenty-two thousand, eight hundred. Now, we pay about thirteen-nine a month. That's what we've been paying, yeah. And we have a thirty thousand dollar pool under the current contract for outside care, which I think we've shot that this year. But this two thirty-eight covers all the prescriptions, payroll, labor, insurance, all those issues, all the supplies and all those kinda things. And then basically Dr. Bates just pays that thirty-five, seven hundred, but that's based on that two thirty-eight. So if for some reason we only use two hundred thousand, that number would come down, but it would not go any higher.
Our payment's going thirteen thousand a month, twenty-two thousand.
It's gonna be all part nine thousand dollars, yes. Now, part, you know, we've talked about this, but some of the issues that ran into with the federal lawsuit we were involved in with prior to entering Dr. Bates and expending money, and then there was a brief period of time when we did not have a contract with Dr. Bates and sheriff was having to run everybody up to the hospital or to a doctor and we had a cost of two hundred and twenty-six thousand doing it on our own. I think two hundred and twenty-six, that's what it was about. And that was a decade ago. If we were having to do that now, that's probably three fifty to four hundred without blinking an eye.
But still, this, this, what would we pay them to get? We don't have money in our budget to cover this market, but.
We could work on when that would begin, but sheriff, do y'all have any ideas about the costs?
There's no way we can afford it in our general fund. What Kevin and I have talked about is where you've got a portion of your lockup and housing fee that goes to the jail fund. It has approximately two hundred thousand in it. If we pay a portion of this from our general and pay the other portion out of that other fund. And y'all determine when that start date would be with Dr. Bates if y'all choose to do this.
That would get us to the, basically the extra nine thousand dollars a month.
What's the minimum time, Kevin, on the, on the, ten or twelve hours and what that you could get by with the law that lets you then provide?
Do what now?
What is the minimum that the law makes you provide healthcare for the nurse or the LPN there for the hours and stuff on the time when you come in?
I can answer that a little bit. They dispense medication. So if an inmate comes in, he's got high blood pressure, he has to have his blood pressure medicine, the nurse will give him his medicine, but that's twelve hours. So nurse is there to dispense the medication. That's the coverage I wanted, was the twelve hours. It's also, I mean, Dr. Bates is, I think I can say this, firmly insisting upon it, is to have the nurse there to dispense the medication, because if they're not there during both ends of that twelve hours, it leaves it up to us and I don't want us.
Well, it's not, it's not if somebody's there and not doing it, it's liability if something happens to that person when they were not there.
Right, the problem we've been having is.
That's what, I mean, you, if you didn't have any problem for two weeks, you wouldn't need anybody for two weeks, but if something happened ten minutes after they walked out the door, you'd be liable.
Yeah, and that's roughly what happened, because we didn't have anybody there all of the time, but when we had the lawsuit a decade plus ago, and we don't wanna get back into that.
It goes back to that red tape. It's always about the red tape that's what's crushing everybody.
Well, this is about.
Plus they got more rights than people walking around doing nothing. I mean, it's just, it's the way it works.
Yeah, they have coverage than we do.
Yes.
We get hurt, we go to emergency room, wait there three, four hours, they got one to get to us.
It's a minimum level of service to the inmates that come in, because one, it does the sheriff a good to have someone check them out when they get in, to see what kinda problems they're having. If somebody may be having DTs or whatever, because we don't want anyone to die where they're in our care or control. And if they are on medication, then they need to get that medication. There's obviously limits on what we give them. If they're on narcotic pain medication, we don't dispense those things, but having that nurse there protects us, protects the sheriff from anything that may happen. And it gives the inmate a basic level of human service that I believe we can argue that the constitution requires us to give them. We're not checking them out, we're not, you know, giving them full-scale exams and giving them extra care. We're giving a very basic level of care that they may absolutely need. The problem we run into is if we don't have that, we've got a hundred and thirty to a hundred and seventy inmates in there that are coming to the sheriff saying, I'm sick, I've got this problem. He's not able to make that determination, our deputies are not able to make that determination. So we have to take them to a medical provider at that point in time, which takes up time for our deputies, which takes up, you know, extra hospital bills when maybe somebody has just got a cough or maybe somebody faking, which when we have the extra inmates that we have in our jail, that likelihood is to increase. It's a lot of money, it's.
It is, and it's not y'all's fault about this, but the problem is, we got, it's the same thing we deal with every day. These people say, well, if we're gonna spend this money on these people in prison and in our jail, we can even ride down the road without tearing our front end of our car. People say, well, just let them slip out on the ground. Well, I mean, the majority of people don't give a rip about it. You know, I mean, that's just the way they feel. They're sick of it.
Yeah, I understand, and unfortunately, that's, that's how it happens.
Unfortunately, law doesn't let you do that.
And.
It goes back to that.
That same person may have a family member that gets arrested or whatever, DUI or whatever, that gets put in jail and dies in there because nobody was there to check to see what his condition was, that'd be the first person to sue you too.
Yeah, then they got a different outlook, you know? When it becomes they or their family.
Problem I have with medication at the jail too, Scott knows this, is the weekends, if you wanna touch on it.
Yeah, on the weekends, we have no one there and we have a lot of inmates that come in and there's no one there to dispense the medication or even find out what medications people are on or what they're taking, which leads to backlog on Monday for the nurse who's trying to figure all that out, but we have inmates in there for two days and we don't know if they may have some condition. We've had some issues arise with inmates that have been brought in and had something.
There's just nine thousand a month that is gonna cost us, is it dollars?
That's cost what we're paying now.
Plus what it costs a month, that's what it'd go up to, nine thousand a month.
No, it looks twenty-two thousand a month. We're paying thirteen already.
It's nine thousand extra.
Right, nine thousand extra for a car. It'd be an extra nine thousand.
So this would possibly cut down on letting them out to the emergency room, some to the hospital.
Be somebody there seven days a week too.
And we have somebody that's basically on call too. And I know our current nurse is very good about that, is my understanding, about calling, you know, after hours.
Is there any, does anyone do this themselves and pay for their people themselves? Can that be, I mean, what are you paying for a week? How much personnel have you got down there every week that he's paying for?
Here's the issue about, about doing it that way. First of all, it's sort of like security at the courthouse, where we have an outside firm doing the security. We could do it ourselves and we actually have people pursuant to the constitution that are equipped to provide security, because we have deputies. But you have the extra building cost, because our deputies cost more in retirement and all that. So when we're looking at doing healthcare at the jail and say, well, let's bring in our own people, well, now, we don't have anybody in the county that's tasked with that. So we'd have to go hire a doctor, because we'd have to have, you have to have a doctor to oversee. We'd have to hire roughly two and a half nurses. We'd have to provide their insurance, their liability insurance, which is a whole different cost and other benefits and all that kinda stuff. They could hire them cheaper than we could and we would, it'd be a whole nother level of administration that we'd have running the numbers and running all those kinda things. I think that could be potentially a much higher cost for the county.
Nurse practitioner wouldn't qualify, would it, Kevin?
Still, she'd have to work under a doctor, so.
Right, at one time, Bob, remember years ago, we had a local doctor here and then he did it and then till his insurance found out where he was actually working on the county jail contract with us, he wanted us to pay his liability insurance, which was a strong, I mean, it was hot. That's what he's talking about. If it's local, then you couldn't afford it, in my opinion.
And we'd have to find, I'm sorry, we'd have to find somebody who wouldn't do it.
Well, once the gentleman came to by and talked to us about having sales money on hospital relations, thing like this, or this, how much of this includes a hospital? I mean, he won't be of any help to us.
Dr. Bates' company has basically said they'll do the same thing for us. Right now, what we have is after we reach that thirty thousand dollar threshold of outside care, it's on, it's completely on the county. Which, but sometimes is, we haven't reached that threshold, but due to a few of the inmates we have down there now, we've exceeded that threshold. And once it gets past that thirty, we have no idea what that number may be. But both of these companies, Dr. Bates and Lynn, which managers have basically said they would take care of the negotiating any outside care bill, like if it went to the emergency room or the hospital, and reduce the, reduce the cost and they would get fifteen percent of the reduction. So if you had a ten thousand dollar bill, they knocked it down to five thousand dollars, then we would get, they would only get fifteen percent of the five thousand dollars to do that, which in some sense could save us money.
Put a sign over the door, what the hell was it? If you're gonna be locked up in this jail, we're gonna have you on risk.
You got a sign up there.
I think they know that.
You don't get it your way.
Yeah, once again, we're gonna have to do some budget alterations.
Yeah, and Dr. Bates has been, I think sheriff can talk to this, very willing to work with this county. In fact, pursuant to our existing contract, he could have went up, starting in two thousand and fifteen, three percent each year, and he's not done that. So I think if we needed some time, maybe even to get us to the next budget year, he might be willing to do that. But the threat's been pretty much, look, we're putting our nurse in a very bad situation and we don't want that. So, and we can't have them pull out, because there's.
Does every county in the state have this or some kind of healthcare somewhere?
Not every county, but most.
Majority of counties.
Majority, not everybody.
What's the, what's the, the ones that don't participate?
Sitting around waiting on the lawsuit.
I think they're playing a really good game of craps. I think they're playing a really good game of craps. They're rolling the dot up against the law and hope that everything works out. But I think this, and I know the cost and I know counties are the worst government organization in the state as far as being able to generate money. Y'all, y'all have been dealt a very bad hand with that. So I know there's a lot of extra cost in it, but I hope that it's money that y'all expend and it never saves you down. The problem is, y'all take the risk. Y'all can be liable, sheriff could be liable, and the county could be out a whole lot more money than this.
Well, could you sign them up on all of my bumper cars so great, we just give them all that, can't we?
That's a bit of the frustrating thing is that I can get arrested and have the best healthcare in the world, you know, have the best health insurance. Once I become a, arrested an inmate, I'm the property of the county at that point in time, properties is a strong word to use, but I fall under the county's responsibility. My insurance is not even checked with. Because I've tried that, because, you know, it's crazy, somebody's got good Blue Cross Bridge Shield Insurance and they're down there, why can't they?
Not use it?
Yeah. I don't figure too many.
No, I don't think we have that problem.
I'm like Bob, we'll have to, we'll have to figure out a way to do it. It's not gonna get cheaper, it's gonna keep arising with time and years, you know, ten years from now, what's it gonna cost? And that's kinda like this, we've gotta have, we've gotta have money coming in to do all of this somehow.
I think, Lisa, presently for the next year or so, we're using those funds to pay. That fills in that extra nine thousand dollars a month, using the lockup fees fills in the extra nine thousand a month. So you're budgeted for the thirteen, six, thirteen, seven, thirteen, nine, and using the lockup fees can fill in that gap until we can make the visas down the road.
Okay, you got any more good news?
I've got a bunch of good news, but we need to vote on that, on the healthcare contracts.
Were you gonna talk to him, say he can wait the next budget, or you gonna?
Well, I think if we can go ahead and pass it, I can talk with him.
And we vote on that state?
Yeah, we put it on that.
I mean.
We're gonna use the money that Kevin gave you, said the two hundred something five, so that's good. That'll cover, that'll roughly cover two year, a little better.
How long's this contract for? I mean.
It's usually been for about three years.
What'd he go for?
He's went five on that.
Or five?
Yeah, we negotiated with him a little long. Now, our motion, we accept the rules and regulations if Mr. Our lawyer just passed that to us and then give this contract to Dr. Bates.
That's with the nine thousand coming out to pay the difference. I'll make that motion.
Right, that's good.
I'll second it.
Hold there, say aye? Hold likewise.
More good stuff with the jail. Thank y'all. We've had discussions about a new jail, we've met with architects and had them in. I'd recommend to y'all to go ahead and engage an architect firm to get with the sheriff and start getting us a plan for what we need for the county. My recommendation, based upon our meetings and our discussion and with other people and with the sheriff, will be Mr. Red Jones of PH and J in Montgomery. And my understanding is, the way his contract will work, is, yes, sir, is he's. And my understanding is, the way his contract will work, is like, yes, sir, is he's, he doesn't get paid unless we do something, unless we build, agree to build it. So he'd work with the sheriff on developing a plan to come back to y'all and figure out what we need.
Well, what, say we engage with the PH and J, what's their first, what's our first order of business? What will they come and help us do?
They will come in, they will meet with the sheriff, they will meet with other engaged parties, meet with y'all, meet with our court officials as well, and determine what we need. And that'll be based upon our inmate population, maybe our court dockets, talking with y'all, seeing what y'all desire, what y'all want. And my desire for them would be to develop a plan, not, you know, not go ahead and do the drawings, but develop a plan to present to y'all for, here's what we think y'all need to marry a county. And y'all can say, yay, nay, let's do something different. But that's, I believe we need to have someone engaged to go ahead and get us that, because we've talked about several different, different things. And I have an opinion about it, y'all have opinions about it, sheriff has an opinion about it, and they all may be the same opinion. But I'd like to get an architect on board, somebody that can look through and tell us exactly what we need.
At what point in time do we start paying architects if we engage them?
That's my understanding with Mr. Jones, the sheriff, you might want to speak more clearly, because you've had the direct conversation.
Well, what they'll do, Bob, he's already came in a few years ago and analyzed my jail several years ago, did, did me a feasibility study for free. They'll do some things for free. Now, the first step is getting them in here, talking to what, we got to sit down and determine and just say, "Hey, this is what we need, this is what we want," and kind of plumb and air sketch it. Now, my understanding is, he does some things for free, but once he starts actually drawing it, then it's going to start costing some money. Now, how much, I don't know.
Well, I thought they, he said they'd come in here, help us realize what we need.
They will. I'm just talking about the jail part.
Yeah.
And that was been, that's been seven, eight years ago when he did it. So my numbers is even up and down than they were then. So he's got to come back and do that, do that also again.
They're standing in line to do that, I can't, I can't remember all of them that's to do, except the PH, Jones and them. I've, I've talked to some more people pretty lately about the jails and stuff, and that's something that we need to discuss too. I was told, I'll discuss that later. But anyway, we need to, like Kevin said, we need to sit down and talk about, and I guess the best thing is Kevin say, "Tell us what you want." I mean, and I mean, the number, and that would be an easy thing to start with. How many, how many sales do you need? You tell us what you think and then we can express, express our opinion on what we think and maybe come to a number and go from there. And another thing is the land, have you addressed on the land?
We have talked to the city, I have talked to them, I think Scott's been engaged with them also. The industrial park is available.
Right.
I feel like we can get it fair and reasonable, real reasonable. So that's an ideal part, spot for me, I think would be feasible for everybody. Of course, I haven't sat down in a formal meeting with them, but they're working on it and I'm working on it, so...
They're working on you a number or money for it?
Pretty much swap, five acres for twenty. The jail ward says in that, it's around five acres and then swap the building for that twenty acres of industrial park. It's what's been discussed.
Yeah. Now, I believe JHR would be happy with that location.
Yes.
For what time, we need to leave with our contingency bill, the state and our representative senators about funding and hospitalization.
That's the next part of my conversation.
I already made that contact with the pay.
Yes, we've already had that, those discussions and they've been very positive about doing whatever we need. And Brooke has come up with some ideas, looking at our budget, looking where our revenue sources are, and again, we're limited on where we get revenue. But that's why I believe it's important for us to go ahead and engage an architect, so that we can now, because it's, now we got to start knowing what we got to have, so that we can then get a bill if we need a bill passed or get some things changed, so that we can know, how much money do we need? Yeah, because that's going to, that's going to mean a lot, whether we need five hundred thousand dollars or do we need a million dollars? And so if we can hire an architect that comes in, gives us roughly that feasibility study, but can give their thoughts, and Mr. Jones, I believe, had already presented us some basic rough numbers about how much for bed we're to look at. But I think it's down to the point of, what do we need? We need somebody to tell us what we need, that has the experience to do that.
Whether we have a general consensus on that we feel like this will be our best plan to go with?
I think we had tremendous firms here that were very interested in doing that. And as far as the architect, I know the sheriff is very comfortable with Mr. Jones, I'm comfortable with Mr. Jones, people I respect.
Well, Bob's people are very thoughtful, we spoke with.
Yes, sir.
So at this stage, we, we're supposed to take a motion to engage with these people?
Yes.
How are we going to pay for this?
Well, that, that will be based upon, I believe he'll come in and do this feasibility study and talk with us about what we need. We make that determination. And then, once we get into the project, we wrap his fees into the project, if we do it. If we decide at this point in time not to do it, probably won't owe him anything. We only owe him once he starts doing actual architect.
My understanding was that, when he would start charging, would be when he actually started drawing the plan. All this planning stuff, he will do for free.
With the hope, obviously.
Yeah, with the hope of getting it.
Can we put this till Monday, to vote on it on Monday and let us talk on the other ones? Because there's, like I said, there's four or five, and I know this one comes off strong, but there's more, two comes up pretty strong too, and actually has kind of got my attention on buildings and jails. So, I mean, that's up to y'all, but not me. We wouldn't vote on it now, that's, that's what Bob was asking, if we need to vote on it.
I'm waiting. That's what I can wait, the money.
Well, I mean, it's up to y'all. They can't talk about it, you never know, yes, unless, you know. I hear emotionally, we need to vote today or wait Monday, whichever.
You don't have to vote on that, you know, y'all can vote on it today or y'all can vote it on Monday. You don't have to, you don't have to vote to put it out to Monday. My thoughts on engaging someone isn't, and again, a couple of days may not matter, but sooner the better, because they go, the legislature goes back into full session March nineteenth, and I'd like to maybe have some thought before March nineteenth.
You know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know of anything I'm going to, anybody's going to talk to me between now and Monday. It's, you know, the, as I say, I'm, I'm, what we talked to, I'm as pleased as these people, what people recommended, y'all and the bond people too, so you know, I, whatever, as I say, I don't, whatever y'all do. It'll make no difference, this is like Monday, late, I don't... All right.
Monday, you can find.
All right.
I'd like to look at some jails, I'd like to go to Winston County, I'd like to go to Fayette, I'd like to see some different ones.
I think they've PH and J done Winston County, am I not wrong?
Yes, they did Winston County.
Who what?
They did Winston County, they have built several jails across the state of Alabama and remodeled several too. I mean, they know what they're doing, which I must say, none of the companies don't either.
Right.
But they have a good working relationship with the bonding company and everybody's been involved, you know? And I've been affiliated with this company personally for seventeen years, through the Sheriff's Association, because that's how I know them.
Right. I'm kind of, I'm kind of like Kenneth, I would like to go and, matter of fact, I think that, what was that built for, a hundred and ten up there?
Around a hundred and twenty.
Something like that in Winston County?
Who did rustles?
I'm not sure who done rustles.
I forgot about him.
Not sure.
Okay, anything else, Scott?
Yes, sir.
I think that's about, completes our agenda for today, is there anything else? Your motion, would you?
My motion?
The motion?
I'll second.
Second? Oh, there's that.
Ah.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49CountyNewsTV.